Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting tonight, Monday, March 4th. In attendance, we have Supervisor Erler, Supervisor Ekman, Supervisor Friedman, Supervisor Albert, Supervisor Birmingham, and we do have a quorum for tonight's meeting. The agenda, you can find copies of the agenda on the podium right up here. All the supervisors seeing the agenda?
Yes.
Yes. I get a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll now open it up for public comment. Public comment is three minutes. It'll have the clock right up here. Just ask you to come up to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give us your name and address. Yeah, Bob, come on up.
My name is Robert Teal at 2424 North Delaware Drive, Mount Bethel, Pennsylvania. And I am the acting chairman of your planning commission. I thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you. I don't understand what the purpose of this meeting is. If, I hope I don't have it wrong, that you're, the purpose of this meeting is the sole purpose of dissolving our municipal authority. I think you're terribly mistaken to do that. There's, there's a good array of business people on that agenda. If it's talking about the drip irrigation system, if you remember back when we were talking about it, and having a municipal sewer down through the affected areas, Mr. Cole, and I addressed to you, John, if you remember that, Mr. Cole said, "A drip irrigation system is far better than having a public sewer where the water goes down to the sewer, sanitary sewer, and out into the river." But with that said, the DEP agrees that a drip irrigation system is much better. And not only the DEP, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, everybody is saying that a drip irrigation system is much better, if properly installed. Now, you heard the dissertation on that drip irrigation system. The misnomer that a lot of things are going to be put in there is wrong. It doesn't allow for industrial waste to go in there. But what it does allow is for a municipal authority to control it. If you take that control away from Upper Mount Bethel Township, you're sadly mistaken. Your words, John, we are know that we're not going to stop them. Why not work with them? Make it happen for this town. Get something good out of it. Do not deny them all of the things they need, the tools, to attract industry. If you do that, you're going to wind up with a bunch of warehouses that nobody really wants, and you're going to lose control of this town and the finances. What you're doing tonight is you're spending money, township taxpayer money, you think you're doing, you're representing all the people, you're, you're representing some of the people, not all of the people. And there's a great number of people here that are starting to see the light. Your words, you can't stop them, but why not work with them? I was the chief negotiator there, and I'll tell you the truth, lately I've been telling Mr. Pector, I think he's crazy about giving that kind of money to this town, especially when there's so much hate involved. So much hate that you said terrible things about not only myself, but Mr. Pector also. Granted, he's no saint, he's a businessman, but none of you are business people. And I, and I hope that you don't try to do this. Thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Eleanor, did you?
Mr. Birmingham, I asked to be able to make a presentation tonight. I have a great deal of historical information and documents about the history of the sewer system and the efforts to create a sewer system, and it will be very enlightening particularly to all the new members of the board. So I would like to have the opportunity to make that presentation. I cannot make it in three minutes. I have a file of documents for each one of you in those boxes that you should want to have and should want to have some explanation of, and then you'll take that information and you'll do what you want. So I would ask you to allow me time to make my presentation as not part of public comment.
Well, it, at this point, we've already had the agenda out. It wasn't on the agenda. We've already approved the agenda. You know, you can come to a future meeting, and we're going to have a discussion about it. If the supervisors decide during that discussion tonight that we want to hear your presentation, then we'll let you know at that time.
John, it says discussion on the municipal authority. That's exactly the topic that I want to talk to. And you're going to shut me down and not allow me after I did all the work to pull all of this stuff together?
You came...
So that you can make an informed decision?
You came...
John, I just want you to know, if you give him 20 minutes, I want 20 minutes, and everybody else is going to want 20 minutes. The rule is three minutes. He gets three minutes. That's it.
All right, Mike.
Shut up!
No, guys, guys, we're not, I'm going to call the meeting if it gets unruly. We'll have the discussion, Mr. Kaplan, and then we'll let you know.
Then, in my three minutes, I'm going to hand out to each member of this board, please give me a hand, please, a whole series of documents.
You can, you can leave from there.
No, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to do it with my three minutes. What I'm going to do, I'm going to give to each member of the board, so that when, when you do something that really is a problem, you won't be able to say that you didn't do it. And then I'm going to tell you what's in these documents.
I did, thank you.
Cindy, you going to have that read by the morning? You going to have that read by tomorrow morning?
So let me give you, let me give you a rundown of what's here. I, I, included in this binder is the number five, the hearing transcript from the approval of the authority on September 11th. And you'll see that I highlighted it. There are three highlighted sections. One by Judy Henkel telling us how it's been a screwed up situation since 2000 with regard to sewer here. And then there's a colloquy between Mr. Birmingham and Mr. Coyle, where they tell you that no work has been done, there's no information about sewer, that there ought to be a committee, and study after study after study needs to be done. Then there's a newspaper article, number one, quoting Mr. Birmingham back in 2020, when Mr. Coyle presented his planning module, or new Act 537 plan, that this township spent somewhere around $150,000, and it shows every study imaginable has been done. John, I, I can't imagine how you could sit there and say there's been no work done. In this binder is a, a presentation, there's a presentation of Act 537 by Rick, by Rick Fisher, and that was done back four years ago.
You gotta wrap it up.
No, I'm not going to wrap it up, you're going to throw me out. Mr., the people ought to be able to understand.
Throw him out! Throw him out!
Hold on, hold on, wrap it up, let's wrap it up.
Uh, while I've got nine documents, I'll wrap it up. Mr. Mr. Fisher laid out in a PowerPoint the history of four different engineers that have been hired to, to investigate sewer in this township. So you, and, and, and the most unbelievable part of this is that Mr. Coyle prepared a 537 plan that specifically says that the sewer for the I-2 district should be, should be exactly as we have provided.
Mr. Kaplan, I'm going to interrupt you.
Yeah?
And, okay, we're going to ask you to, you've had over your three minutes allocation. You've presented the, the materials to the board, they will take it under consideration, but we're going to ask you to step back now.
Okay, well, I'm going to say...
No, no, one more. You've already exceeded your time limit.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say one more thing.
That's what you said five minutes ago.
I'm, I'm going to say one more thing.
Let's wrap it up now, now.
When we presented our plans originally, there was no municipal authority. The Lehigh Valley Planning Commission said there should be an authority. People like Charlie Cole went down and said...
All right, Mr. Kaplan, I'm not letting you go on.
And we've, we've proposed an authority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mark.
I did not say there should be an authority, I said there should not be.
Charlie, wait for your public comment.
Mark Metzger, North 14th and 15th Court, Mount Bethel, Pennsylvania. Can you hear me? Mr. Chairman, for the last four years, the residents of this township have said through elections and petitions that they do not want a major industrial complex in their backyards. Recently, though, I see the focus of the discussion within the township is changing, okay? They seem to be more interested in looking for alternatives, and they are starting to ask questions like, "If not an industrial complex, then what?" Okay? If you recall, last week at the multi-community meeting that you had, those questions started to surface. Clearly, the town is going to need an economic engine to foster future growth and to support the taxpayer, tax base. The people who realize that want to know, besides this huge industrial complex, what other options are out there? In order for the RPL industrial park to be successful, it's going to have to overcome many barriers. Availability and cost of labor in this area, the lack of infrastructure for water, sewer, transportation, the lack of public support within the region for this type of project, okay? And as this project matures, the impact of these risks may force RPL to make some serious business decisions, and they may terminate it. So I'm asking, does it make sense to continue exclusively down this road, or should we explore better potential options that might be out there? My fear is that even if other options are found, they won't be seriously considered until RPL is willing to give up on the current project and either sell the property or decide to work with the community on a Mount Bethel municipal project. And then this brings me to the authority. The benefit of the authority to the community has never been established, and it is an entity that can easily be dealt with right now. Pennsylvania Title 53, Sections 5619 and 5622 provide the Board of Supervisors with the authority to either dissolve or take control of this recently created authority. These statutes have been thoroughly vetted through the Pennsylvania courts. One example is the case of the Township of Forks versus Forks Township Municipal Sewer Authority. All the steps and resolutions needed to dissolve an authority are included in that case study. Forks Township was successful in the dissolution of their sewer authority, which was far more advanced in, in operation far longer than the one we have. So, Mr. Chairman, we, the concerned citizens, are asking that the Board of Supervisors direct the authority's directors to dissolve or cede control over the recently created municipal authority, and then, let's work together to try to find a project that the community will endorse and support to move the township into the future with minimal risks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Charlie.
Charles Cole, 6 Riverton Road. I want to set the record straight, I never said that there should be an authority. In fact, I've stood up here and said, I thought, from my professional judgment, that an authority would be a mistake, and I spoke to many acquaintances, professional acquaintances, both legal and engineering, and their answer was to an authority when you're doing it within a municipality, you don't. So, I don't believe in what I said, set up an authority, that's untrue.
Anyone else, public, yeah?
I don't know what you're shaking your head about.
Good evening, Eleanor Shelton, 943 Hayden Road. So at the newly limited municipal authority organizational meeting on February 26th, the authority members voted to authorize their solicitor to defend them from any attempts to dissolve it. And I need to ask those authority members what exactly it is they believe they are defending, because it's not the formation or existence of a municipal authority that was never ruled out. In fact, it's been suggested it might happen in the future. But a municipal authority isn't, is responsible, is not responsible of the township, but it has vast powers to affect the residents, so before granting such powers, it makes sense to do such due diligence and to examine what the needs of the township are to assert. But because this municipal, municipal authority was formed in haste by a majority, it simply does not have the credibility that an organization with such power needs. At the hearing on 9/11, Mr. Pinter stated that there had been previous discussions of establishing a municipal authority, and it, and then went on to state that it was in regard to residential needs on 6/11. That discussion revolves around a few residential areas, but this municipal authority was not established to address those residential needs. It was established for a single client, an industrial development, and the scope and needs are completely different. It's also been stated that any plan approvals necessitating a municipal authority are months, if not years, away. Since there is no pressing business, why couldn't forming the authority wait for a few months? I've heard Mr. Kaplan state that the development could go ahead without a municipal authority, but that RPL assumed there would be one. Thus, wouldn't and shouldn't RPL be able to work with any municipal authority? There seems no reason they must work with this particular authority, and why would dissolving this one and allowing for due diligence and forming a clear mandate before forming a new one affect them? Perhaps a reformed municipal authority might even have some of the same members. There are some good people. When the ballots were cast, it was clear that the direction of the township residents is different from the direction the previous administration took them. Unfortunately, the haste, the haste with which this municipal, municipal authority is formed is tainted. The RPL development is paying the bills and is backed by wealthy investors who will probably never set foot in this township. The result is, the current municipal authority will be forcing their neighbors to pay for litigation in order to pursue what they believe is best for the township. Members of the municipal authority may not have meant to, but in choosing to resist dissolution, they've actively sided against the majority of their neighbors. Do they really think that open hostility and infliction of financial hardship on those they're supposed to serve is a good way to start their tenure? I've heard some municipal authority members state that there is only one chance to do this right. Wouldn't that start with the trust of the people you're purporting to serve? If you truly wish to do this the right way, why not dissolve yourself and let the new administration form a municipal authority with a clear mandate that the people can trust? Thank you.
Thank you. Next? No one? Fred?
Good evening, Fred Clark, Crystal Terrace, Upper Mount Bethel. Today, I would like to speak about the UMBT Municipal Authority, I'll use "authority," and its relationship to the Agreement for Construction and Operation of Community Sewage and Water Facilities Agreement dated 06/26/2023 on the township website. Regarding the document on the website, this document is not identified as draft, is undated, all signature lines are blank, and is missing key exhibits, specifically those concerning sewer and water plans, which serve as its underlying reason for existence. I realize negotiations have continued since the draft was written, but as a document based legally binding actions on, it is severely lacking. It probably should be removed from the website or replaced with something current. Considering the public hearing and the Board of Supervisors' vote on 9/11/2023 to form the authority was held using the 6/26/2023 version of the agreement as its publicly available foundational document, and this document had no more legal standing than this piece of paper with my public comment has, the Board of Supervisors should review the case for the formation of municipal authority and take any action they need, they deem necessary. Further, I have following questions and observations. For our solicitor, the agreement identifies Upper Mount Bethel Township as a party. Does Upper Mount Bethel Township mean the Board of Supervisors must sign the agreement for it to be in effect? B, if so, should the Board of Supervisors be directly involved in negotiations regarding the agreement along with the municipal authority? Please explain. For the Board of Supervisors, is anyone on the Board of Supervisors involved in negotiation regarding the agreement? If not, why not? Number three, Bassett is listed as party to the agreement. Does Bassett have the same legal requirements to post public notice and have hearings on actions related to its legal relationship with the municipal authority? If so, I've been able to find evidence that they have. If they do, why was this not done before the formation of the municipal authority, as their role is in the RPL development plan and the success of the, this authority is critical? Four, the discussion about having the authority was, it, in, during discussion about the authority, it was imperative to some that it would be a municipal entity, because that would give municipality control over the water and sewer needs of the town. Now the authority has passed a resolution to defend itself from dissolution by the township government. Specifically, where is the municipal control that was promised when five appointed individuals can threaten to thwart the will of the duly elected township government that they derive their existence from? Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Fred. And Cindy, you can give a copy of Fred's questions to Ron? Yeah, please. Anyone else, public comment? Yeah, Judy.
Judith Henkel, 1752 Robin Hood Road. And I'm not even going to talk about why my name was mentioned or whatever, because that's basically a part of the disinformation, the keeping people arguing with each other. There's a, to me, 25 minutes, and we're not even getting to the crux of what this meeting is about. You just had three residents, Mr. Clark, Metzger, and Ms. Shelton, that gave very well-referenced and documented information to you, how we feel. And, and we're down to now, and I'm just going to say, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, this misinformation, and say it over and over and over again, so that people, you drum it into their head. The Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, in their response letter, and this was back in, I forget, in the fall, basically, they said, if you're going to have a wastewater treatment plant, it would be best to have the municipality have control. You don't want a private, in other words, the developer having his own plant, or you don't want a third party coming in, which is what is happening now. Big, big companies are trying to buy up the wastewater treatment plants in small towns. So, I, I just, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to continue, because I would like to get to the, you know, the issue at hand. And I would hope that we could have the character assassination and the dis, because I see people who are now out of power have, have put themselves in power with this authority, which, if you, you're all going to say, the authority has its own ability to do eminent domain, to get grants, to do this, that, and the other thing. They are separate from our township, they will have control over our wastewater and our water. And, and that's a very, it, it's, it's a big thing. And so the fact that you're all looking into it, that's all this was, a discussion to find out just where we are in this process. So I, I'm kind of hoping we can just step back and listen to what you all have to say, look at the facts, and see where we want to go here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Yeah, come on up, Karen.
Sharon Duffield, 554 Potomac. I have heard repeatedly, statements being made, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission recommends this, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission says that. It's very interesting to me that they've been saying a lot of things for a really long time, for years now. One of the first things they said, ladies and gentlemen, was that this whole entire thing was a bad idea, that it didn't fit, it didn't belong here, it didn't fit the character of the township. They cautioned over numerous items, and when all of those things were being brought up, it was, oh, doesn't matter what they say. Now, all of a sudden, it's amazing to me that it matters. So as you're sitting there talking about these things, I would hope you remember back to all of the things they talked about, and there were a lot over these last few years. And I hope you remember back about the numerous times residents have stood here, about the hundreds of signatures on petitions, about the hundreds of people at meetings. And I hope you remember back what was said then too, by the residents, as well as by LVPC. And thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment?
Marty Penner, 39 Lindsay Lane, Mount Bethel, Saddle Creek. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight I address you not as a fellow citizen, but as someone who has been on the receiving end of baseless attacks and character assassination by a board that has forgotten its purpose. The level of pettiness, immaturity, and personal vendettas displayed by this board is not just disappointing, it's disgraceful. This board, in its infinite wisdom, has chosen to ignore the advice to read Team of Rivals by Doris Kearns Goodwin. If you remember, I mentioned that a couple of meetings ago. This book underscores the value of diversity in leadership, a principle I embrace wholeheartedly when I extended an invitation, not once, but twice, during public meetings to apply for the authority. I also talked personally to Mr. Fred Clark and Mr. Michael Onifrag about joining the authority, because I thought they would make great members, only to be met with rejection by the both of them. In fact, the only people who volunteered are the sitting members of the board today. Cindy can attest to it, those are the only ones that delivered letters. Instead, instead of rising to the occasion, this board has regressed, acting out like children who've been teased, now find themselves in positions of power and are determined to soil the royal oats, engaging in reckless spending... oats, engaging in reckless spending spree with taxpayer money that we do not have. This board seeks to puff out its chest in a display of faux strength. The recent meeting with leaders from other communities was nothing short of a careful, orchestrated attempt to undermine the project here in Upper Mount Bethel Township, attended by individuals cherry-picked for their opposition, including a member from Lower Mount Bethel who was voted off the board in the last election, who was approved, was she approved, to represent the township at this meeting? Because I found nothing in the Lower Mount Bethel meeting minutes giving her the authority to act as that representative. But let's stay focused on the board in front of us today, the one that has been violating the Sunshine Law by holding executive sessions to discuss the selection of Mr. Earler as supervisor, which was stated by Mr. Ron Engel the other week in the last Board of Supervisor meeting, and the same board who's been discussing Gross McGinley as its solicitor, as an agent purely focused on the municipal authority behind closed doors and not in public. Gross McGinley was given a blank check to investigate the dissolution of the authority without any discussion of cost and without proper authorization. They appeared at the zoning hearing board meeting. If this is happening in front of us, I can only imagine when more than three members of this board, whose sole purpose is to try to destroy this development, are meeting at Five Points Tavern, Allegheny Brewery, and other secret meetings that have been going on in this township that others have sought and seen and have disclosed. Let's be clear, this board has no plan for our township. The campaign was built on a hollow promise of transparency, yet we have, yet what we've seen is anything but. Instead, they've woven a tapestry of fear, misinformation, lies, and guerrilla attacks believing that they can operate above the law and without accountability.
Marty, wrap it up.
This board is working on, working in regression, not progression. Your efforts for two months have been to regress this township. You can either embrace the progress and learn to work with it, or get run over by it. This board is burning every bridge, I'm almost done, burning every bridge in and out of effort to save the room faced within the township. Last paragraph, in a twisted homage to Joseph Gobel's strategy of accusing your enemy of which you're guilty of yourself, this board has projected its own guilt onto others. It's a sad state of affairs when those elected to service and public good resort to tactics of the history's most notorious propagandists.
Listen, we gotta stay within the three minutes, all right? I'm gonna get a little more tougher because otherwise, people are just gonna take advantage. Yeah, let's, wait, do bring it up at next public comment.
Remember Robert's rules? You said you understood Robert's rules, as I pointed out. I'm very knowledgeable.
Wait, wait, wait. No, name and address, please.
Ron Engel, I still live on Million Dollar Highway, I'm still a resident of Upper Mount Bethel Township, Pennsylvania, United States of America. Now, don't start the clock.
No, I'm starting the clock. This is your public comment.
Under a point of order, you can't even get started. You did say last time, Mr. Earler, you said that you were gonna have public comment in the beginning and the end. You said there was open, transparent government and whatever.
That was for the last meeting.
Okay, are you in favor?
This is a special meeting.
Then I would ask, are you in favor of public comment at the beginning and the end so that people who have a comment after they've heard everything at the end will have an opportunity then to speak? Are you still for that?
I, I'm really for trying to discuss the things that this board is trying to do, and we're giving the people the time for public comment. We are abiding by the Sunshine Act, so there's a lot that I would like to discuss with them to try and get things done. And since I can't do that without being in front of the public, that's why this meeting was created, and that's what I really like to get to.
And keep in mind, he's answering me, I haven't used my time. But you did say you were for public comment in the beginning and the end, the last time, and they did do it.
If the time would allow.
I see on the agenda now, if time allows, this is the people's government. There's always time for people's government.
Ron, this is a special meeting. We'll go back to the public comments in our regular meetings. The reason we were talking about taking it off is because people were taking advantage of it, and if people are gonna take advantage of it, then we're gonna only give one public comment.
I didn't ask you a question, I have three minutes, correct?
That's what I'm saying, and that's what we have to follow. Go ahead, Ron.
And this is the government of the people, by the people, and for the people? What the hell happened here? Is any of the rest of you up front who aren't part of this little clique, do you see anything wrong here? I mean, I'd like to hear from some of you. You were for the beginning and the end, now you're not for that, and I understand your concern, can I finish with my?
I'm for this actually doing something, and we're not going to be tabling and pushing things on, as I've seen in the past years.
While I got one, okay, be quiet, while I got one minute left. While I got one minute left.
Ron, have a little respect.
Yeah, I do. Will you please have a little respect for us people?
Carry on.
This is our government here. You're merely the head of it, but it's our government.
Ron, carry on.
Yeah, very good. One last question. How much per hour are you saying paying your new solicitor?
I think, I think you're 160 an hour?
That is correct.
He's got any 160 an hour?
Keep talking, he might charge us more.
What's that?
He might start charging us more.
160 an hour.
You people love this. You drank the Kool-Aid most of it, now you gotta love it.
Anyone else, public comment? Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Well, that was interesting, okay. Moving up, section four is discussion on the municipal authority. So, that is the purpose of tonight's meeting, it's for you, the public, to hear us, the supervisors, discuss the municipal authority. So, I'm gonna open it up for discussion on what the other supervisors feel. John, you can start off.
Okay, I'll start then. I have my, my notes listed into concerns, facts, and possible solutions. The concerns is that this was formed without following the actual blueprint and studies as, I'm to understand everything, that it was kinda hastily put forward, and that's why we don't have the confidence of a lot of the townspeople. I also believe RPL originally stated that they will adhere to all town ordinance and restrictions when they first came in and bought the property, and it, it feels to me, from an outside point of view, now inside, but that it was almost like a bait and switch, that now they wanted, the text amendment went through, they're rushing the authority, the zoning hearing for the drip field on residential land instead of in the industrial district, the extra road acquisitions that I know that they didn't ask for, but the town gave regardless. There are some really big concerns about the possibility of eminent domain to increase or anything that they have in that area going by the municipal authority. The board is made up of what I see to be one qualified member for sewer and water, which is Mr. Potter, I think you saw him. Three members of the EDC board, Cole, Paul, and Higgins, and one former Board Supervisor, Pinter, Martin Pinter. I know that I'm just kinda throwing these concerns at you, but I'm almost trying to adhere to the three minutes myself.
You can take a little longer than that.
Well, I, I do really think that the municipal authority will greatly reduce the Board of Supervisors who are elected, our authority to react to the concerns and the issues of our own residents. I don't think that that power should be taken out of our hands. I, I understand, sorry, I should have prefaced it with, I did meet up with Martin Pinter for an hour on Thursday, or an hour and a half. I did speak to him about why they thought the need for the authority, and he, he did have some good points. There are some issues that we will be solving. The areas of concern of Area A, B, and C would all be slightly addressed, it's more for the consideration of Area A. The, the plan, Act 537 Plan is out there, I can tell that no one's read it in a while because there was a nice layer of dust on top of it when I picked it up, but I, I read through that quite a bit, there's way too much in there for me to be fully prepared for tonight, but I'm trying to do my due diligence not to screw this town in ways that we might not expect. We do have things that we have to address, they've been put aside for a very, very long time, and it doesn't mean, if we keep ignoring them, it's, it's going to get worse. The house is on 611, some people say that it's a small portion of the residents, but they have septic going into their drinking water. That's a big concern. If we're to protect the townspeople, we're not gonna look at, oh, we're only gonna protect these people, we have to look at everyone as a whole, and the municipal authority does do that. So, it's not all bad. There are certain things we can do. We can dissolve it, we can offer other restrictions onto the authority to make them not, not jump through hoops or go through tape, but to make sure that elected officials have eyes on the project. I read a quote that came up out of nowhere, that mushrooms don't grow in direct sunlight, no matter how much bullshit you plant them on. So, if we have other restrictions in place, perhaps the municipal authority can be good for both the I-2 and I-3 as well as the town. The way it's constructed right now, we don't have that regulation, so I'm, I'm really not in favor of it, the way it stands. Again, there are really good points to it.
John, in regards to the authority, what do you understand in regards to what the board can do and can't do? What's your understanding of that? Any, any expansion of?
Wait, wait, Marty, Marty.
Just, just, just let me get through, because I'm still going through concerns. I do have solutions at the ends, and I have facts that are incontrovertible of things that we are going to be facing and have been facing, even though we might not be seeing it. A lot of the things, I didn't know as a resident, there are a lot of plates up in the air, and to just ignore them means that they will eventually fall, and the people that are going to be getting sick from the water, or the people's fields who will smell from the drip irrigation, these are, these are all things that need to be looked at. They need to be handled properly, and I don't want to rush into doing the wrong thing.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Go ahead, I'll pass it on to someone else.
I thought you were done. Okay, let's, well, it's, we're gonna get back to them.
If this is an open discussion, I don't wanna take up everyone's time and get everyone tired, I do hope so.
Jason, your thoughts? The Articles of Incorporation were filed, correct?
Yes.
They were filed?
Yes.
In, in those Articles of Incorporation, is there a mission statement or a purpose in that, or are you guys waiting to see if everything goes through, then you incorporate that into your bylaws?
That gets incorporated into the bylaws, but we need to be organized, we need to work as a group to make the mission.
Okay, I was just curious, because I didn't know if that was included in, I've been involved in different organizations, and sometimes the Articles of Incorporation include the mission statement and/or the purpose.
Can I help Jason?
No, no.
There is a specific provision.
No, Mr. Kaplan, come on. Mr. Kaplan.
I, I think Marty answered it for me, I think, I mean. There's different examples, and I think he's.
Mr. Kaplan, if Jason calls on you, then.
I think I understand, I mean, there's, there's a difference between bylaws and Articles of Incorporation, I just wanted to see if there was a purpose or a mission statement added into the, you know, to begin that. Whether or not we have an authority, they can still go ahead and build the sewers, correct?
Yeah, as far, yeah.
I mean, what I'm saying is, not having authority is not gonna stop them, correct? They can still go ahead and do it, we could just say, go ahead, do your plant, right?
Correct.
So, we don't need to, we don't need necessarily for them to have the authority for them to continue with their construction.
Can I answer that, John?
We'll, we'll.
Okay, this is not, this is a discussion by the, the Board of Supervisors, and will allow certain?
I understand that, but they need to have all the answers.
Okay, but it is not an open forum, and it's not public comment.
Also, you're silencing.
No, I'm not silencing you.
No, we'll come to, we'll, now, we'll come to you if we have questions. You got public comment, gives you your First Amendment rights, now the supervisors are having a discussion. Jason, Jason, go ahead.
Well, that was just my main question, you know, we're not stopping, we're not, not enabling them to continue, correct?
Right.
Okay, I have a couple others, but go ahead with the other, go ahead.
We were given a list, sewer and water recommended procedures and processes by our township engineer. None of these have been followed, recommended committee, feasibility study, and so on, none of these have been followed in the creation of this authority. And I'm gonna say, Mr. Pinter is correct in one thing. The township retained the right to approve of any plan of the authority. The problem is, this authority was created solely to provide sewer and water service towards the I-2, I-3 zone, with no mention of Upper Mount Bethel Township or the citizens. I believe in the future, we're gonna be, we, I would say, reinvigorating the 537 Plan. After we get a 537 Plan, maybe there's, in the future, room for an authority, but at this time, I can see no reason to have an authority that has no assets and no income other than the, let's not think of the escrow account provided by RPL. In the future, perhaps, not at this time, there's absolutely no reason to have an authority now. So, that is my thoughts on the matter, my discussion.
Feel the same way, I mean, we've won against everything that our engineer has given us through the years. We still, at the end of the day, have no water supply. I think it's, you know, we put the cart before the horse by putting an authority together when, you know, the ground's not even beat turned, there's, you know, the plans are being talked about for the sewage treatment plant. Sure, I'm watching trees every day get pulled out of the dirt lane, so I'm sure trees are being cut down back there getting ready for something, but, I mean, why put an authority in when there's nothing there yet?
Yeah, and it could be, in the future, if we're looking at a municipal authority, is to have Mr. Kaplan come back and give us a presentation.
Maybe there's some walls or something, and, you know, but I don't know, I just feel that, you know, for so long, we've not listened to Justin, who is hired by this township to protect the residents, and we've won against pretty much almost everything he said.
John?
I'm sorry, is there a question to me? I, I was just thinking. We do have facts that are in front of us, that, one thing that kinda did get under my skin is that the municipal authority has had tall. is that the municipal authority has had talks with RPL before their creation. And they haven't talked to any of the board supervisors. I went out of my way to talk to Martin Pinter, um, to try and get a little bit of what their goal was and, and what they're assisting the town in. I, I do know that the municipal authority, uh, if, if they do decide to build it, the municipal authority will help Mr. Pector, um, get grants to the creation of the authority, which I'm not really opposed to. It's going to be a big project, and if we can use it to satisfy some of our septic issues. The grants are, are a good way to build such a, a large plant. It's not going to be cheap, and it's not gonna be easy. So some people said, oh, they only want it for the grant money. To me, it's like, well, that, that's a pretty good idea. If I, if I was in his shoes, I'd, I'd look for a, a way to do grant money as well. Without the plant or any plant there, I, I don't think that, um, doing any type of, anything other than warehouses is, is doable. Portland doesn't have the capacity to take anything more than what they're currently, they're not even offering us anything. I do know that Stephanie Steele was contacted in July twenty ninth of two thousand nineteen, and again in October twenty ninth of two thousand nineteen, uh, to try and satisfy our Act 537 Plan, and she didn't respond at all. I don't think that there's been any correspondence since then. But Portland needs to be involved in our Act 537 Plan to have it fulfilled if we can't satisfy the entire thing ourselves.
The feasible study that kept saying, because you'd go to Portland's meetings, and Portland's meetings would say they didn't have room, or, you know, there was no dialect and then you, or dialogue, and then you find out that, oh, well, the feasible study wasn't done. The feasible study was done, correct?
Well, the capacity study was done.
Right, and there was no room.
And, and Portland refuses to give us the capacity study.
Well, where is the report? Was there any given report?
They refusing to give it to us.
After it was paid to do for fifteen.
We paid to do it.
When was that?
You're on right track.
Right here.
Pector paid for the feasibility study.
Okay.
The township did not.
Okay, uh, thank you for that clarification. Again, I, I'm, I'm trying to cram as much as I can, and the stuff that I'm, I'm reading through, it's, it's heavy, man. I am, I am not trained to do it, and I'm, I'm pulling my big boy pants on, and I'm, I'm trying to get to the bottom of a lot of these issues.
Glad to help you.
Well, let's, let's talk about the, um.
Yeah, this is like a good week's worth of reading, man.
I'll be glad to walk you through.
Let's, let's talk about the 537 Plan.
Okay. Thoughts, thoughts on that?
John, can I make a comment with, uh, John, no, I was saying.
Yeah.
I, I actually had an email today from Stephanie. I'm in contact with Portland. The study's not done yet. It's other than they're not willing to do it. They asked for six months, and they're almost completed with that study. And we will be getting something from Stephanie, and that she's the chair of the committee. So that's not, what you were saying is not true.
Okay.
She's been, I've been in contact with her, and the study's not done yet.
Okay.
And they're working every, they have meetings with their engineer, uh, the commissioners that are on that committee, and, uh, that, that study will be coming soon. I just wanted to clarify.
Do, do they have a, uh, an expected date of when it would be completed?
Soon.
John, can I just give you a little insight on that real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Some of the members of the authority.
Oh, Ray, come up to the mic, please, sorry. I just give your name, please.
Ray Higgins, five eighty seven, Phil Road. Some of our members went to that meeting. We went to Portland's meeting, and we discussed getting that report from them, as Nick was talking about. And, uh, basically, they said until that report was done, they wouldn't really even communicate with us. And then I, I present all of you with one suggestion, uh, that, that I hope you go home and at least think about what I'm saying to you. Instead of being up here trying to dissolve a board that you really don't know what we're doing, I understand that. You don't know what our thoughts are. You don't know what direction anybody is coming from. Instead of dissolving the authority, why aren't you guys becoming part of what we're doing? And, and know what we're doing, and understand what the people on that committee have as thoughts? Because I think you'd be surprised, and I think all of you should be a part of, uh, in, in one form or another, to figure out what the hell's right for this town. All the people that are in these groups and all the supervisors that sit here, we all take this on. And we have to do what's right. And if that means talking to each other when you don't like each other, so be it. Get over it. Stop acting like children. You guys have to figure out how to work with each other. It can't be all one opinion and all another. It has to be opinions put together to figure out what's best for this town. And instead of dissolving a group that you really have no idea what is going on, join it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the question of where we're at. Do we dissolve it and start over and start the way our engineer said? Or do we keep it going and try to work with them and see?
Well, I, I do have, I do have some other facts that I, I think that we should at least consider.
Go ahead.
I, I don't approve that the municipal authority, it's only real client is RPL, and they are to monitor RPL as per their meeting that they were going to do the testing and stuff like that. I, I just feel that that's a, a conflict there. The person that's really supplying your funding is who you have to, uh, put regulations on. The, the current Act 537 Plan recommends two hundred and twenty thousand gallons per day for the I two and I three building. And Mr. Pector, I believe your plant is gonna be taking nine hundred thousand gallons?
No.
Per day? No?
No, the plant and everything that we presented is a four hundred thousand gallon plant, of which a hundred thousand gallons is reserved for the township. John, you don't have a lot of information. The, the plant is not only to serve RPL. The agreement I drafted months and months ago was going to give about twenty to thirty thousand gallons of both treatment capacity and disposal capacity.
Can I ask you what, what, what's with the doubling of the, uh, I believe in October eleventh of two thousand nineteen that you asked for, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand gallons?
I don't know what you're getting your information from.
That was straight out of the Act 530 book.
I don't know what book you're talking about. That, that's not ours, that's.
So you didn't, you didn't ask for that amount?
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what. John, I'll tell you what you're talking, I believe you're talking about the 537 Plan that Coyle did, that this township paid about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for. And that plan, I can show you the specific pages, recommends that, that, uh, for the I two, there'd be a plant exactly as we have proposed, and what's called an SDR, uh, plant. And the, our original proposal was that, um, we would give you a certain amount of disposal capacity, but that the township would take a piece of the park that has been tested by the township and is included in Coyle's, in Coyle's 537 Plan, and that to, to be used to service the problems you're talking about in area A, B, and C. You're, you're, you're not getting the right information. The, the other thing is that, there's a lot of things. But when you go through the history of the last twenty years of the stopping and the starting, it usually is because what was proposed either by Brinjack in the early twenty, in the early two thousands, Cassa Valley, um, now, uh, Power Engineering. The problem was that they throw numbers like six to ten million dollars around to create the plant. And that's one of the reasons why none of those things got done. Our proposal is that we will build the plant on our property. We will pay for the plant.
Okay.
I'm not done.
Okay.
Mr. Kaplan. Mr. Kaplan.
Mr. Kaplan.
John controls the questioning, not the other way around.
That's fine, can I finish?
Well, hold on.
There's, there's some more things that I, I think we gotta get here. And again, I, I hate being a part of these, these eleven o'clock PM.
It's great what you're asking.
John, you control it.
You did mention, um, that it's going to be built on the RPL land, and I do agree with that. I, I do think that the drip field should be on it as well.
I'm talking about the drip.
Okay.
I was talking about.
Okay, Mr. Kaplan. I'm trying to encompass the whole, the whole thing. I just find it funny that, that they were stating that the farmland is the, um, the best for the drip field because it drains the best, and it's, it's a no-brainer because it was farmed. You know, that land was manicured for decades.
John, the Coyle.
Mr. Kaplan, we're not yelling out questions.
John, I'd like to help you.
Mr. Kaplan.
Okay, but again, but let's try and keep the discussion for up here. If, if we call on you, thank you for correcting that, that thing.
There's a lot of things that you're saying that are not correct.
You and I can be here all night long.
Well, if we were discussing the real facts and issues, that wouldn't be bad.
Thank you. I know that their affluence can't be drained into the river, um, so a drip field is, is the most decent. But if we double or triple the size, we can have it on a less drainable soil and not be affecting the farms that are there, if they were gonna do it. I know that the municipal authority already gave their consent to go in front of the zoning hearing board. That's why I'm bringing up that point.
Okay.
And I, I, there is a fact that exactly what we're talking about right now, that there isn't a line of communication between you, Mr. Pector, RPL as a, as an entity, and anyone on this board of supervisors currently. And I'm hoping that maybe we can create some type of, I don't know, if it's a liaison would be the right thing, or, or just a, a sit-down that maybe we can get more facts ironed out and provide you with the actual concerns that we're hearing through our, our citizens.
Yeah, we could, we could do a future special meeting where it's just the supervisors all here talking to RPL, and, uh, this way, all five supervisors can be together. We can all ask questions, the public can attend, and we can try and open up discussions again.
Okay. I, I started out with maybe four pages of questions that I'm, I've been trying to answer. And although my facts might not be spot-on, I feel like I'm heading in the right direction. And honestly, you know, with, with how people respond to a lot of things, it, it is a lot of emotional, uh, driving it, and maybe I won't ever get to the end, but I'm, I'm hoping that tomorrow I'm gonna be in a better place than I am right now.
John, I think.
Thank you, John.
John, I think your questions are right on. I've got an awful lot of information that I would like to impart to.
I got it. And I, I will, I will take the time to read this. I'm, I'm not BSing you. I, I'll sit down and read this. But I, I know, I know that this is going to be from one point of view. And there are a lot of point of views that I represent, so.
First of all, you don't have to read everything.
Okay, is, is there anyone else?
Fran, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want some clarification.
You gotta come up to the mic.
What's the difference between a municipal authority, a town municipal authority, and a private municipal authority?
That's a heck of a question, Fran. Adrian, do you wanna take a shot at that?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a bit nuanced. Uh, I don't know if I can answer that intelligently here tonight, but, I mean, in basic terms, it's exactly what it sounds like. One is formed as a municipal agency, uh, and the other has, doesn't have that same oversight. Now, there is still oversight for any municipal authority under the, the laws of Pennsylvania, but they are organized differently. They have different goals, and they have different, um, let's say, motivations.
All right, I have a question. A municipal authority, uh, that's the town municipal authority, the town itself, the board would have control over it?
No, that's, that's, I think, the point of contention that the board is discussing tonight, that the board is a, a corporation, uh, the, the municipal authority is a corporation unto itself, organized.
Were, were you just asking about the town?
Yeah, I, I think there was three different authorities. There's a private.
Yeah.
And a municipal authority, and then the town municipal authority.
No.
No.
There's no private.
Here, this is why I'm answering the question.
So there's no private municipal, uh, no, no private authority that's at, at question here. So what we have is the municipal authority that has been created, which is its own corporation, will presumably at some point would have its own bylaws, but they haven't been created yet, that we know about. And, um, they will, uh, they will work independently, um, which is, I believe, why we're here tonight to discuss some of these issues.
Yeah.
All right, another question. I, I, I was, this land will be Pector's, right? He's, he's.
Which land?
Where he's building the, the sewer plant and drip irrigation.
He purchased it.
Yeah. Um, will he charge us rent, or is he gonna give us the land too?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, the fork township one.
Let's, let's keep it, keep it down, please.
I read an article that they, they now took that authority and brought it into the Forks Township, and that they were paying rent to the authority to, to use it.
I'm not sure.
You mean like a tapping fee, like we?
No, well, the, the article I read said rent.
Guys.
I'm not, I'm just referring, example.
Hey, Fran, why don't we talk after this?
Okay.
Okay?
All right, because I'm getting so confused about this whole situation.
Thanks. Let's go, Marty.
So Frank, Frank, the, the Forks Township one that you're talking about, the land was on Forks Township land.
Right.
So they leased that land to the authority. That's why they were paying the authority. That's why the authority, that's why the authority was paying the township.
Okay, because that's what township.
Our plan is to dedicate the land to the.
Okay, so, just in, 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 in hopes of moving this, in moving this forward, our attorney sent a letter over to you all, um, on March fourth to extend that, saying we wanna have a meeting with you all to discuss what our plan is and the oversight and everything else. I have a copy of it here, in case you guys didn't get it via email.
Did we send today?
We sent it, we read it today.
Okay, so you guys did get this?
Yeah.
Actually, I didn't get it. I'll take a copy.
That's why I was, I was happy that I, I did sit down with you to discuss it before.
So, the oversight of the board for the authority is any, I'll say, any additional areas of service has to be approved by the board. We made sure that the board had that approval, so that the authority just can't go, these people now have to be on, these people now have to be on. That was the reason why we kept that authority with the board, was so that that does not happen. The authority will insulate the township in terms of any liability. You know, I don't, I do not wanna see what happens down in, uh, Portland where the board is running that and all the taxpayers are on the hook for any issues. Here, this is isolated, that the authority keeps the people. Here, this is isolated that the authority keeps the people that are using the service, and no taxpayers outside of the service, if they're connected, pay for the authority or the sewer or anything else. Once that is brought in, I'll say in-house to the board, every taxpayer in this township will have a requirement to pay for the sewer system. That's the reason why we set up the authority, was to insulate that from the taxpayers as well as any issues. It is a separate company and an LLC or a corporation to take the liability of the sewer plant off that of the township. It's very, it's, this is done in business all the time to protect the other entities below it, the township being the main entity. You don't want that connected to them. That's why you open up a corporation and insulate any liabilities or any issues from that, from the township. And that's exactly what the authority is there for.
Thank you. Mark, come on up. Just a couple more, then we're gonna bring the discussion back up here.
Oh, he gets a second, do I get a second, John?
You went over your three minutes. You took like six minutes, Mr. Kaplan.
You've been talking all night.
What I wanted to suggest, John, is we try to take the emotion out of this situation. Normally, when you set up a company and people need to invest in that, you put together a business plan. I strongly suggest that somebody put together a formal business plan that we can look at, that will look at the mission, that will look at the project requirements, that will cost these things out. Put these things on a calendar so that we know and can anticipate what things are. Show us what the projected revenues are gonna be. Tell us what the projected costs are gonna be. Identify the risks. Is it done? Well, let's see it.
So all been done?
Thanks, Mark.
At the public?
And then we can make a rational decision.
Well, just hold on, Charlie, if you can. So Adrian, a question I have to you is, this municipal authority, which is separate from the township, you know, can go forward with certain acts on its own. For example, like eminent domain.
Again, I think a lot of that depends on what its mission and bylaws say. And until that is established, we don't know what authority this authority has.
But if they put it in their bylaws that they have the power of eminent domain, then do they per se have the power of eminent domain?
It's not quite that simple. Potentially, yes, but there are checks and balances.
Guys, can I have the questions up here? I know we have everybody in the audience who wants to jump in with answers, but I'm asking Adrian.
There are checks and balances in place that the township can step in on those things as an interested party. So it's not quite as simple as they can go ahead and act unilaterally without some oversight. So that is, that is, that is a fair assessment of what would happen. But again, without some more precise review of what their actual bylaws will be, what the actual mission is and those kind of things, we wouldn't be able to say it here tonight.
Are there other regulations that we could have them abide by and put into their bylaws?
Well, I mean, I don't think you can unilaterally tell them what to put in their bylaws. You can have a discussion with them about what the township would like to have in there and that, you know. But I don't think that the township itself can unilaterally say, "You, separate corporation, are required to put this in, in your bylaws," without some additional resolutions. There are ways to do it. Again, it's not a simple one, two, three. It's much more complex than that. But you could have some checks and balances in place.
Let me ask Jason, what are your thoughts?
To be honest with you, I think, I'm not against an authority. But I'm against the way that the authority at this time was created. Is it, was it a rush? I think it could have been a rush. I'm just looking at Justin's thing. I mean, maybe we should have had the sewer committee idea like he said in his, in his flowchart. I don't think that was ever done in the previous board. I don't think a committee was ever established for that. And that could have, that could have solved some more things, some more discussions, an open thing up. I, I mean, I know this was created just for the, just for that zone. I mean, it doesn't say anything. I haven't seen their articles in corporations, so I don't know, and their bylaws haven't been established yet. Maybe there, maybe there should be more discussion. And I mean, I don't, I'm not in favor of it, but I'm in favor of having more discussion. I would like to see some other things. I would like to see, I would like to see some forecasted projections, which I did see. I'd like to talk to them about like their insurance reserves, stuff like that. I don't have that information. They probably haven't even sat down, even discussed that yet. So I think, I think maybe, I mean, there's nothing, we're just having a discussion tonight. That's what's on the agenda, right? There's no, I reckon, there's nothing else. It's a discussion of a municipal authority, so.
Well, you can make a motion. Anybody can make a motion.
I have no plans to make a motion. I think that we should listen a little bit more and talk and maybe get some other things out. We can set an authority up at any time. Well, I mean, if the plan is, or the vote goes to dissolve, you can set up another one or whatnot. But I think that maybe that we should do a little bit more investigation, a little bit more cooperation, find out a little bit more, find out what the, what the projections are gonna be for the, for the intentions under their articles. I'd like to see their bylaws once they establish it. A lot of the stuff that people are concerned about, I think, may or may not be eliminated in those bylaws. And we haven't seen them yet. So I just think that we need to look at it a little bit more in my own opinion. I mean, once again, that's just my opinion, but I think we need to.
No, no, Mr. Kaplan. Mr. Kaplan, no, we're discussing right now. I don't want, I don't want your influence, no. Mr. Kaplan, we're discussing right now. Please go sit down.
Without any.
Please go sit down, Mr. Kaplan. I'm sorry, Jason, anything else?
No, I just, I mean, I'm not sure. I only know one person on the board, so, I mean, well, I know two people, but on the authority, so I'm not sure. You came up and spoke before. So, I mean, he made a good point, you know, made a very good point to, maybe there's not enough that we know.
Hold on, just hold on, Ray. Go ahead.
And like I said, maybe, I, maybe we should sit down and continue an open discussion somehow and really look at some other options or other ways. And maybe we can get back to the engineer's flowchart, just so, maybe just reverse it a little bit, not like reverse any actions or anything, just maybe reverse and start again on that flowchart and work through it.
First of all, like I said, I think we should have our engineer start the 537 process again. Then we should contact Portland and wait till they get their study done and see what Portland has to say about this. Because I know RPL originally was gonna try to tie into Portland, but that didn't work out. But if they come up with their study and get their recommendations, maybe we can actually cooperate and have Portland come into this formula or equation. So I'm on a quandary here. The problem is, I have a resolution I'd like to propose to the board dissolving the authority. Or do we table this and wait and do more research and get our 537 in order, Portland's views and everything, and sit down and have this discussion that everybody's been talking about? The problem is, if we don't dissolve the authority, they can still keep going what they wanna do. If we do dissolve the authority, we can start from scratch again. Because you have to remember, this has been going on since October 20th of 2022, when the first review and agreement of construction of the operation of community sewage facilities was held at Mr. Carisack's office. And then they had another one on October the 26th. So it's been, well, we're what, two and a half, not two and a half, but a year and a half? So, you know, that's, that's my position. How far do we go in dissolving the authority? Or do we dissolve the authority and start from scratch? Or do we table this and try to work things out?
I wish Justin was here, you know, that we could ask him some questions and his views on it. I know we heard him multiple times in the past. He didn't, wasn't a fan of us doing it. You know, he wanted the 537. I mean, it's kinda like you're putting a roof on a house, you know, you're putting shingles on a roof without nails. We started an authority, but we don't have the 537. You know, it has work that needs to be done on it. Again, multiple times, put the cart with this whole development, you know, put it out first before anything. So, I mean, at some point, we need to step back and try to keep brains and, and listen to why we have Carroll Engineer or, you know, listen to, to work it out. You know, if this authority stays, then they need to work it out with us and, and we need to be in agreement. But I just don't see without a 537 what they have to work off of and, you know what I mean? And without Justin here and his flowchart that we all saw even before we sat up here, it was the last thing to do.
John.
I, I still think there are some things that are worth looking into, and they almost can be done with the municipal authority dissolved or not if we're trying to move forward. I hope we can reserve the right to create a municipal authority in the future after studies are done if we do go through with dissolving it. But I know that the Poconos Food Facility has an abandoned water treatment plant in there that was listed in the paperwork outside, and I wouldn't have known about that without, without heavy digging. So there are options that might not even be brought to the table, that we're gonna have to do some research and really figure out the best way to do it. Currently, I'm, I'm honestly not in favor of the, the authority of how it was set up and in its current configuration.
Adrian, a question for you is if a supervisor makes a motion to dissolve the authority, an authority can always be reestablished, is that correct?
The same statute that governs dissolving the authority also governs creation. So there's no inhibition on you as a board supervisor if you dissolve the authority but creating a new one?
Adrian, it's not on their agenda.
So.
I'm answering questions, Mr. Kaplan.
Well, I'm just saying to you, dissolving the authority is not on the published agenda. All that's on the published agenda is a discussion.
Mr., okay.
And my understanding.
Mr. Kaplan, this is not a court argument. This is not a court argument.
We will be very sure.
No, he's trying to make an argument for Riverpoint.
No, I'm not. I'm telling, I'm telling the solicitor.
Mr. Kaplan.
I understand what's on the agenda, Mr. Kaplan, thank you.
So the municipal authority could always be reestablished, is what I get from you.
Correct.
Okay. So the question, the question becomes is whether, you know, like I think I said it earlier, is whether we dissolve it and start over, or whether we do more fact-finding and see if we can work with this current authority.
I personally would like to see a more diverse board on there, maybe with an environmentalist being that that is what their ultimate goal is to do, which they do not have any currently.
Okay. Well, I think, if any supervisor wants to make a motion, I mean, feel free.
Mr. Pinter, would you be, I, I'm not saying this as, as a fact, but do you think the authority would be willing to run all resolutions, acquisitions, changes, and actions by the board of supervisor for approval before you do your own vote on them?
That's why we wanna have, sit down and have a discussion to jointly come up with bylaws. That's the reason why that letter was sent. That's the reason why we haven't come up with bylaws yet.
Okay, given the fact that I do think that there is insulation for the township if anything were to go awry, that there are reasons to having it. Not saying that if we create it later that we can't do it ourselves, but if we were to keep it and not dissolve it, I would really love to see restrictions be placed to especially eminent domain and different environmental issues, which seem to be the beating heart of Mount Bethel.
Well, you can, you can always make a motion to table the discussion for a future meeting.
Yeah.
Or, David, it sounds like you wanna say something.
I, tonight was held bent on dissolving this authority. After hearing these comments in front of everybody tonight, I'd like to make the motion that we table the dissolution of this authority for one month so that we can contact Portland, we can have a conference with our engineer and our solicitor into the, what should I Good or bad of what the authority might do. And we'll get the 537 plan going again. So like I said, there's a lot of questions. So I'm making that motion, we table this for one month.
Okay, do, hold on, wait for discussion, wait for discussion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Martin.
So I just wanted. I just wanna confirm that our board, our engineer, our solicitor, as well as your solicitor, your board, and Portland can all sit down together.
That would be great, but we'll be setting the terms.
We're just asking for a sit-down, David.
That's all, I know, I realize that, but we'll be setting the terms when we meet.
That's fine. You just let, let my solicitor know, let myself know, and we'll be there.
Okay, thanks, Martin. Let's go, Ron. I'll give you, I'll give you a minute and a half.
I find it kind of interesting, Mr. Birmingham, you called the multi-municipal meeting of our adjoining neighbors, of which the majority didn't show up. When I asked East Banger what their concerns were, in the end, their concerns were the dump truck traffic coming up 611 and down 512. When I asked the Portland representative about the sewerage treatment plant, do you remember what her answer was?
I do.
What was it?
Now, this is a quiz show. I know what she said. I know what she said. Carry on, Ron.
Yeah, what she said was, "No comment." She didn't wanna talk about it this time. The bottom line is.
And she said to check the minutes as well.
Okay, the bottom line is Portland's sewerage treatment plant is only at 20% capacity. They have major malfunctioning problems with it all the time. Maybe malfunction isn't a term, but stuff is going down, drains if your property are in.
Mr. Engel, do you have proof of that, that they only use 20%?
It's a fact. It's a fact. But again, what's, what's unique is that plant is grandfather, in other words, there's no sewer authority in Portland. The borough owns the whole operation through a grant from a state senator years ago, and they were well-connected. But besides all of that, is Portland has a discharge permit into the river. Trying to get one of those today is zero. Now, you do know that, Mr. Birmingham, you had the gentleman up from the Riverkeepers. The bottom line is, that would be a logical thing to do. But I think somebody's gotta come up with a lot of money to upgrade that plant, bring it up to capacity, get all the approvals, and whatever. But I do find it ironic, you invited all those people to come here to try to join you to be opposed to Riverpoint.
Ron, that's, that's entirely incorrect. What I did was having, what I did that was for was to have a discussion about the development. Because when you say false statements, Ron, I'm gonna correct you. That's the way it goes. Like you correct me, I will correct you.
Yeah, that's good. You don't have the ability to correct me. Frankly, your knowledge is not of the local government. You might, you might have a law degree, but I don't think you have the knowledge.
Ron, you entertain me, that's enough, Ron.
You know, you can get your cacklers out here, cackling, preaching to lay some eggs for you maybe. I'm not gonna lay the eggs. The bottom line is, the bottom line is, Portland said to you, their concern about Riverpoint was the truck traffic. I presume all of you have rode through Portland lately. Riverpoint was the truck traffic. I presume all of you have rode through Portland lately. I don't know where the truck traffic would go. They were worried about their downtown. But the bottom line is, they are evidently negotiating, and yes, there was meetings about the enlarging or whatever of that sewerage treatment plant. And that would be a logical thing to do, Jonathan. It would take up some capacity. I don't think that plant, without having more addition to capacity, would be much of a problem, but it would be some...
The, the first step into getting something like that accomplished was exactly what Mr. Birmingham did and is to get a sit down with them, which I, I've, I've discovered is, is harder to do with Portland than almost any other borough.
Yeah.
And they are the most important when they're dealing with this because they are literally the neighbors of RPL.
But they're gonna look out for Portland. They're not gonna look out for Portland.
And I, I was a truck driver too, and if GPS messes up, I mean, you just, you make it work. So, I understand their concern that trucks will be going down there, even if not purposefully. It'll, it's gonna happen.
Trucks will go through Portland and go up 611? I mean, that's a main road through Portland.
Not for the next couple of years, but they, they will stop for food. They do have their concerns about their smaller side streets, not, not as much on their main. But hey, you said that you, your opinion is your, that's their opinion. So, I'm just glad that we got to hear it. And that was the first time that I, I think that that move has made and we're making progress. We're trying to get down. I asked the question of what would they prefer in, in that district, just, just to get feelers out, to let them know that that is our industrial zone. It was set up to balance out our tax base without us using that. Our future isn't as it was set forth. So, we are gonna have some problems. There are also farms that went from commercial zoning to protected. And we never replaced those commercial zoning either. So, there are a lot of, there are a lot of things that have been happening, stepping and stepping and stepping. And I'm just, I'm trying to figure out all of them at once and it's gonna take time and it's gonna take talking with people. I asked you if you wanted to sit down and you refused. So, that's fine. I'm dealing with that with a couple of the people. But the people that are willing to talk to me, I'm willing to listen.
Well, I'm willing to talk to you. I'm just kinda busy right now. It's a rental property, but I, I said to you, I wouldn't...
Mr. Chair, there's a...
I know that you're willing to talk to me, but you're not willing to talk with me.
But, Ron, that's enough.
That's what I've seen.
This is your people out here, John, you're doing it.
Ron, that's enough.
I hope these aren't your people, by the way. Thank you very much. But the point is with...
Well, the point is, you should sit down.
Wrap it up. Let him, let him wrap it up. Go. Wrap it up.
The bottom line is, Portland is going to be interested in Portland, which they should be, and the township should be interested in the township. But I don't understand when they said they were concerned about the truck traffic, they're really, that's not an issue in Portland, I don't think, at this point in time. Even if 611 someday gets opened up, that's not an issue for Portland. Nobody's gonna go up 611. I mean, they're gonna either go on 80 or wherever they're going to go.
Was the dump trucks going to, Banger, the, the dumps there, was that an issue for you before it happened or only...
Oh, yeah. It's an issue for everybody lives here right now, I think.
Right now. But, but was it an issue while they were deciding it?
The bottom line is, those trucks come in...
So, we didn't have too much say? So, they're not gonna have say in it either?
No. What East Banger said was, their major concern right now was, when I asked them, their major concern was, the dump trucks, they're dredging out somewheres in New York or New Jersey, coming one right after the other, up 611 and out 511, East Banger.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Birmingham. We'll soon see you.
You're welcome.
Fred, I know, I told you you had to pass on your comment. I'll get a lie to come up if you want.
All right. I'm, I'm not scripted, so this is gonna be awkward. Couple of things. Martin rightly identified that I turned down the ability, the opportunity to be on the, the municipal authority. And I appreciated that he offered it to me, but my concern is eminent domain. I've been against eminent domain my whole life. I couldn't be an agent of, of being the person who was gonna tell people, you can't have that property anymore. So, that's specifically why I turned that, turned it down. I think I would've been good for the, for the authority. But I believe, and I keep saying to this board and to everyone in the audience, that, you know, the tone around here has to change. We have to stop calling each other children. We need to start meeting, all right? This board, there is no reason this board should not be meeting with RPL to talk about this. There is no reason this board shouldn't be meeting with the municipal authority to discuss that issue before you decide to dissolve. If, if, there, there's not enough discussion going on. It is mind-blowing to me that we're making these decisions for this town without having discussions first. And man, people gotta take the tone down, all right? It's inappropriate. I hear a lot of inappropriate here. And I thought there was an attorney that was good at, at bogarting the, the podium. But man, there's a real pro here and we should all take lessons. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna give the last two comments and then we're gonna go up to a vote. Come on, Bob.
Thank you very much for hearing me again. There's only two things I really wanted to point out. I am a Realtor, so I know a little bit about eminent domain. It's not that easy, as your solicitor said. To actually prove eminent domain is a very arguable situation. And it's really, that's something you really have to kick down the road, but it's not something you have to be concerned of right now. What you have to be concerned about is a municipal authority that wants to act in your behalf and talk to you. You need to have discussions before you jump ahead and, and dissolve. It's easy to get rid of something. It's a hell of a lot harder to get it back, I think.
Thank you, Bob.
Now, you're going to have a, a zoning hearing board meeting that's gonna decide on that drip irrigation system. I think you should wait until after any of that. You should meet before, but then wait until after you get their decision on that drip irrigation field before you jump to conclusions. It may be a moot point. You may not even be talking about that drip irrigation if it's not allowed.
Okay.
So, you know, take your time. You have other things. Take your time. I am respectful of the board because I'm one of your kind of employees, even though I don't get paid. But I've been there for 27 years on that board, that planning commission. And I know how to talk to people and try to get along with them and negotiating deals.
Okay.
If you want, I will help you.
Thank you, Bob. Ray, your last. Go.
Oh, I just wanted to come up there and thank you guys. You guys put in the same time that everybody else of our constantly trying to figure out what's best. And giving us a little time to sit down with you is probably a really good move for both sides. I kinda fall in the middle. I see both sides. So, you know, I'd like you to go a step further. Can we set up a date right away when we get together by the end of the month? I think that you guys all should have say in the bylaws. I don't think any of us has ever uttered the word eminent domain in our meetings. So, I don't think that's on any of our minds at this point for sure. But there should be checks and balances to us and to you. And if we can get a meeting like at the end of the month where we can sit down and start moving forward, that would be great. But thank you all.
Thanks. We'll try and get a meeting. If that's the way we're gonna go, we'll try and get a meeting. Sure. All right, last comrade. You were holding your arm up so nicely impatiently. If you just pull the mic down.
I forgot about that. Just one of my pet peeves about this microphone. Follow directions. One hour hearing is that the municipal authority was formed on poor planning. You have a document that wasn't signed. You had no 537 plan. It went against all the, the engineer's recommendations. Now, we're in the middle of the zoning hearing to decide the strip irrigation field. I have concerns. If you think you're going to dissolve it and recreate it correctly, if that's what you really think, maybe you should do that tonight. And please protect me going to the parking lot because, you know, I mean, I'm all for discussion, planning. I've seen repeatedly the cart being put before the horse, and I really don't wanna see that continue. I think it was rushed. And that's my point.
Thank you.
And I wouldn't be happy with myself if I didn't share that. So, thank you for...
Thank you very much. Any other discussion from the supervisors? Any other thoughts, questions?
No, I mean, if we can get a meeting, that's what we wanna do, but it would be with our engineer, us, you know, the authority, their solicitor, Portland, hands down, you know. We're gonna get that report soon. Let's get the report, sit down with them, you know. Do it right for once and do it in front of everybody.
So, you, like, are you, are you thinking like a special meeting or...
Well, I mean, if we're gonna sit down with, with Marty and his board in Portland, you know, our solicitor and Adrian, you know, Justin. But if that's what we need to do and not do it on a regular workshop meeting or something like that, you know, but it needs to be where residents can come and so they can't say anything's hidden or, you know, closed-door conversations.
Well, we, we wouldn't be violating the Sunshine Act not having the residents there. Just, just from, from my experience, in order to actually have a, a...
If you have a special meeting.
Very diligent conversation, maybe the, like, we can report back. I don't want it to seem like we're, we're hiding or anything since other municipal, other authorities will be there. I do see a problem in getting Portland to actually sit down.
I think Portland would sit down. Portland, Portland will sit down. They have a board that's willing to work with them. You know, we talk to them. I don't foresee a problem with Portland. I really don't.
I think, yeah, I...
I think it was past years' experiences that made a divide between UMBT and Portland. But moving forward, I do not feel that we'll, and I could be wrong and we'll write the day down, but I really don't think that we're gonna have a problem with Portland meeting with us.
I do have a concern if the zoning does pass them being able to use residential land to drip and there isn't an authority, will us, dissolving the authority, have any bearing on that? It seems like during the hearing, they, they're kinda leaning towards doing it because there's an authority to protect them. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna diminish that, that protection and then they get permission to use residential and then there is no regulation or anything like that on it.
Adrian, what are your thoughts?
So, the present application, as I understand it, for the zoning hearing board includes the authority existing, existing and them accepting that being given to them at the end of the construction. I think if there's no authority, then we have a different application. You don't necessarily need an authority to have this kind of wastewater treatment facility, but that is part of the application pending. So, it, it can be done. It doesn't, doesn't mean that this can't be constructed and, and, and put into effect if it's approved. But the complication is the current application in front of the board. At least, the presentation I heard for part of three hours the other day included that the resolution, which we saw for the first time that was passed last week, that the, the, the authority would give the RPL the ability to act on this application and that ultimately that RPL would give the facility over to, to the authority. So, I, I, if the board is considering having discussions about this, I think that would be an appropriate topic to discuss on how that is going to impact and moving forward. If that's what the vote is gonna be here tonight.
If they're gonna, if the zoning board is gonna allow the drip irrigation to happen, then just, just so unclear. They're gonna hand it over to the municipal authority?
After creation. Well, I think that is part of the presentation. For, the, the special exception that is being requested is, quite frankly, the presentation is saying it has nothing to do with the use on it. And that's everything that is being proposed by RPL. This is Mr. Kaplan's point is, and I'm not saying I agree with it, but this is his presentation, is that as long as he meets the criteria of the special exceptions section of the ordinance, it's as of right. So, it shouldn't make any difference in their, from their perspective whether or not there's an authority or not. I am saying that part of the presentation, part of the convincing of, of, of the board was presenting that it is going to be set forth. I think there is not, you know, there is a counter side to that argument that they meet the criteria of the ordinance, but that hasn't been presented yet because we only made through part of one witness. So...
Any other thoughts, supervisors?
I'd like to, I know that I might make some people mad here, but Mr. Pector, would you like to say anything? Please, please, please.
Let him say something.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna get some kind of compromise or, or dealing with in the future, we need to start listening to each other.
Reality is, we own the property. The township doesn't own the property. We own it. We've got certain rights. We've been very patient and very thorough in spending five years and tens of millions of dollars to plan this property. To come up here and act like this is in a hurry, you haven't had time to look at things, is discourteous to us. You have gotten the business plan of the sewer. You've had it. Obviously didn't read it or didn't pass it out. To come here and ask like there isn't a plan, there has been a plan. You haven't had the courtesy to spend the time and educate yourselves as to what we provide. How does it feel to sit in our chair, continue to do this and not be heard in our ear? All the voice of the people stuff is just rhetoric back and forth between you trying to parrot things back and forth and not doing your job. Repeatedly, you come in here and said, I haven't had the time. I'm busy. You know what? We're busy. And it's very discouraging. At some point, we come to a crossroad. And that crossroad starts to make people make decisions they don't wanna make. And it gets very expensive. So, one day, if we ever come to that crossroads and a lot of money is wasted on both sides because of bad behavior, shame on all of us. So, yeah, I didn't come here to say anything, but it gets to the point where I really need to say something because you need to look at it from our standpoint too.
I think the supervisors in the past administration have given you a lot, Mr. Pector. So, to come up here and say you're frustrated and, and we're not prepared and that we're not reading things or whatever, that's a little disrespectful. We, the past minute, the past... No, Lou, let me finish. The past, Lou, it's my turn. I listened to you. So, you, the past administration gave you a lot of stuff of what you wanted to do, what you asked for, you got. Now, all of a sudden, you've got a new administration here and we are looking at things in a different way from the past administration. John asked you to come up here to say, are you willing to work with us? We're trying to start something to work together. Don't take this that we're not helping you, that we're hurting you, that you're losing millions of dollars. This is our town. We've gotta live with this, not you. So, if you wanna work with us, let's work with us. But don't get up here and start off how we're frustrating you and holding you back.
Look, that was a great speech. But the reality is, this is my land, my money. We're spending a lot of money. When I've tried to talk to you, it was no avail.
No, no, you cut me out, Lou. You cut me out of the negotiations. You cut me out of the negotiations.
You are not trustworthy.
Uh, uh, good. If you say I'm trustworthy, then something's wrong because you're not trustworthy. So, Mr. Pector, thank you for your speech. You may have a seat at this time.
Mr. Birmingham, I withdraw my motion to table.
Okay.
I'd like to pass a resolution. I don't know if we can do it now since it isn't on the agenda.
Yeah, you can, you can make the motion.
Well, I believe we have a pending motion.
I would do a second.
Oh, a second. Okay. All right, then.
And whoever seconded has a...
I second it. So, I withdraw.
Now, I'd like to pass a resol, to have the board pass a resolution directing the Upper Mount Bethel Municipal Authority to pay off its debtness, transfer its assets to the township, and to dissolve itself. Now, I don't know if I have to read the whole resolution or not, Mr. Kuznis?
You don't.
I second.
Does he have to read the whole...
Yes, we should read it to the record.
Go ahead.
Whereas the township of Upper Mount Bethel, here and after, the township is a duly authorized township by the second class and... township by the second class and a municipality situated within the county of Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Its office is located at three eight seven Yode Highway, Mount Bethel, Pennsylvania, one eight three four three. And whereas pursuant to five three PACS five six zero one, that's the second word, I guess it is, known as the Municipal Authorities Act, herein the Authorities Act, on or about September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors of Township approved Resolution number two twenty twenty-three dash zero six, which expressed the township's desire to organize an authority for the purpose of the provision of sanitary sewer water, solid, and/or sanitary sewage waste and related utility services, the township. And whereas the proposed sewer authority was organized and approved by the township through Articles of Incorporation on or about October ninth, twenty twenty-three, which created the Upper Mount Bethel Municipal Authority, the Municipal Authority. And whereas the township has determined that the continued existence of the municipal authority is not in the best interest of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the township. Now, therefore, be adhered by resolve by the Board of Township Supervisors of Upper Mount Bethel Township, County of Northampton, Pennsylvania, as follows. One, the above recitals are hereby incorporated by reference. Two, pursuant to the requirements of fifty-three PACSA six five one nine, the township directs the municipal authority with regard to any current projects to pay and discharge all bonds with interest due, which have been secured by a pledge of any revenues or receipts of such project. Three, pursuant to the requirements of five three PACSA six five one nine, the township directs the municipal authority with regard to other property to pay and discharge all bonds issued and outstanding, including the interest due on such bonds, and to settle all other outstanding claims against the municipal authority. Four, pursuant to the requirements of five three PACSA six five one nine, the township directs the municipal authority to convey all property owned by the municipal authority to the township. Five, pursuant to the requirements of five three PACSA six five one nine, the township directs the municipal authority to take all necessary actions to terminate its existence, including but not limited to submitting a certificate to the township requesting termination of the municipal authority. Six, pursuant to the requirements of five three PACSA six five one nine, following submission of the municipal authority, submission of a certificate requesting termination, the township shall by ordinance or resolution approve the termination of the municipal authority. Seven, pursuant to the requirements of P five three PACSA six five one nine, following the filing of the of the filing of the certificate with the Secretary of the Commonwealth and Secretaries notation of the termination of the existence of the municipal authority, the township shall cause the certificate to be recorded with a Northampton County Recorder of Deeds. Eight, pursuant to the requirements of five three PACSA six five one nine, following the recording of the certificate, the property of the municipal authority shall pass to the township, and municipal authority shall cease to exist. This resolution being duly presented by motion and duly seconded was carried on, as thought by the Board of Supervisors of Upper Mount Bethel Township at a public meeting held on fourth day of March twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? I will second that. Any other discussion from the supervisors?
Mr. Chairman, another point of work?
No, no.
Point of work?
All right, Ed, go.
You obviously had the resolution prepared before you paid the, did not have it listed on the agenda that you were gonna vote on. So I'm suggesting that you not.
Adrian, your thoughts?
I don't believe that it needs to be necessarily listed on the on the agenda for it to be voted on tonight.
Okay. So we, we just went through the whole discussion. No, we're carrying on now. Bill, I'll give you a couple minutes since you haven't said anything.
Phil Hall, Jacoby Run Road, Saddle Creek, Upper Mount Bethel. It won't take me a couple minutes, but I just wanna make the point. Think about what you're doing. I mean, really think about it. You all just admitted. You don't have all the information. You don't have complete understanding of all of this. And now you're gonna pass a resolution to dissolve this when you just admitted that because you didn't understand it completely, and you didn't have all the information needed, and the questions answered, now you're gonna move forward. I mean, think of how that makes you look. Think of how that makes all of us look as a township.
I held out a olive branch and I was kicked in the head.
What's that?
I was held, I held out an olive branch and I was kicked in the head.
I don't believe you are. And you know what? When when you serve in capacities like that, you can't have thin skin. Toughen up, buttercup. Really, seriously.
Okay. Go ahead, Phil.
I was just gonna say, you know, the most rational thing here tonight was when we all decided, you all decided, that we were gonna sit down and talk about it, and get the information we didn't have, half the questions answered that we didn't have. There is a ton of information, and a lot of it's been out there. Whether you read it or not, and you had the opportunity to, that's a discussion for another time. But the point is, that the information is there, the questions are there, and the right and the rational and the prudent thing to do, and the democratic thing to do, is to sit down and talk about it, and answer the questions, and make a fully informed decision. This is not a fully informed decision.
Thanks, Phil. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in the, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 John, did you go?
I'm gonna say no, I'll never.
Okay, so the motion passes four one.
No, I do. I didn't vote. I voted no.
Three, two.
You didn't ask for nay.
Okay, let's 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 get a nay, sorry, nay.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
No, no. So the resolution passes three, two. With that being said, I will say, the water authority, the municipal authority can be reestablished. We do have some good members on the municipal authority, so we'll keep that all in mind. Now, we're gonna go back and start from the beginning and get it done the way our engineers said. And and we'd like to still meet with you guys, and let's see how we can reestablish that. Can I get a motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion to adjourn. No, after the meeting, Mark, or Mr. Kaplan. Who made the motion to adjourn? Okay, do, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.